...and Angel County and Forest County are connected by a microwave that's costing Forest County about $20,000 a year to maintain. And it's real close to end of life. And they're looking at, you know, probably a quarter of a million dollars to replace it. So if we take over their dispatching, they... It's oddly enough that the phone exchanges on the west side of Forest County already go through Warren. It's like Russell, Sugar Grove, TDU, Youngsville. Those outlying control offices go through the central office in Warren, while so does the Hickory and Tyanest exchanges. So that $20,000 a year and that $250,000 microwave, they don't need it. So it's a win-win situation for them. And it is an increase to revenue for Warren County.
I just see it as a safety issue for their fire departments, their ambulance, and their sheriff. So currently there are three different agencies that they could have to talk to to try and communicate with each other. And I think it would benefit them greatly if they could deal directly with us. That wouldn't be any lag in sending them assistance or backup or any ancillary things that we do.
And it helps them with our, like, our CAD project going on. With Clarion County being on the telephonic system, Clarion County is going to be on the CAD project where but Angel County's not. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a bigger help to them than it is to us really, but...
Sure. So I've gone to meetings with Forest County and Todd and I'm pretty familiar with this. So I don't really have a lot of questions. Maybe a general comment that I think this helps build science. And you're right that it really would improve the safety of emergency personnel in Forest The only question I still have is, it's not going to increase your workload enough that we're going to need to add staff onto all...
All shifts.
All shifts, yeah. You may have one occasionally or something, but it's management time mostly, most likely.
Yes.
So that's all good. But longer term, is there any infrastructure that we would have to pay for in order to keep that up and going?
That, as we would contract with them, anything that involves us getting their call, getting their calls, or us dispatching their calls would be on their dime.
Okay. So that still comes out of the...
We do need to upgrade a few things on our system in Youngsville.
Okay.
Right now, we have the capability of talking to all them, but we have to use it, we have to take a different radio and change the channel that we normally listen to the, on the police side.
It'll be our county police radio.
Right. We listen on the county police radio. We switch it over to be able to talk to Tyanest right now.
Oh, that's right.
It need be.
Is that what I'm saying?
But, right. But they would, you know, that would be part of Forest County's cost is upgrading anything that we needed to be able to dispatch.
How much is that upgrading the cost?
I still haven't got any pricing on that. Probably, probably not a high figure, probably in the, at the most, probably $20,000, $20 to $30,000.
And that would be covered by Forest?
That would be completely covered by Forest.
Okay. All right. Do either of you have questions?
Just the western edge?
Just the western side. Right now, they're still under contract with Clarion County to do the eastern side.
What's Clarion's contract?
I, I think Bob said there were still two or three, maybe even four years left on the contract they have with them. But as you know, there's some talks in the Clarion and Jefferson County area too of possibly merging and things like that. I mean, that's, that's up to their commissioners and that type of stuff, but, you know. We would entertain, you know, it's about the same over there too. We can handle everything that Forest County does, you know, and Clarion County does without any increase.
Okay.
I mean, right now, L County does, that is all, their county, which was about the same size as us, and Cambria County. We would be about the same boat. If we had all of Warren and all of Forest, we'd be about the same boat when we actually, if you add the two up, we, we actually take more calls.
Okay. And to be clear, does Forest County get like $2,000 a year or just $1,000 total?
It was, it's about $2,000 total for the year, for the entire town.
And that does not include sheriff?
No.
That's just EMS?
That, that's, well, that's just 911 calls.
Okay, okay.
And that's not even, and even at that, you know, those aren't all, when you talk about a 911 call in Forest County, if it involves a police investigation, it's just sent to Ameriville State Police.
Right.
So it's, you know, a 911 call may only be a matter of a minute long.
Very good. Mr. Gilbert, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Any public questions? One last one for me then. What do we need to do in order to formalize this? Do you have a, do they have a draft agreement in place? I know they made an offer, but...
Yeah, they made an offer and I think, you know, we, we talked to Commissioner Schneider and said that, you know, that sounds good, but I needed to, you know, we obviously needed to bring it to the other two commissioners and I think he still needed to take it back to Commissioner Wyler and, and Commissioner Hoffman.
Well, I would think that they would cover the, they could do a draft of an agreement.
Yeah, I'm assuming that we would just cross out the word, and then go put in more, you know, just to have an agreement with them and...
Okay. It's a little generated. Do you need to get it to Attorney Shree or...
Yeah, I'll get it, get it to Attorney Shree as soon as they get something.
Okay. So this could be on the next meeting, could be on the following.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Very good. We're almost out of time anyway. So, good job. Thank you very much for driving that. Looks like a project that could be really beneficial for both counties. All right. Mr. Gilbert, you're up.
So we had our tax sale on the 25th last month. I just wrote down some bullet points here to go over so everyone could understand what we dealt with. We have 2,924 tax bills that were returned to us Estillinquid in 2015. So the total taxable, taxable properties in Warren County is just over 28,000. So it makes roughly 10% were returned to the Tax Chamber Bureau of Estillinquid.
That's definitely high.
Not standard. Some municipalities are a little higher, perhaps double, but typically it's 10% overall. And that's, that's pretty much what's been for the past at least three years, charted. So of those 2,924 that were returned to us, 2,858 were paid. So that makes a collection rate of about 98%. So 2% went to the tax sale. So 66 properties we had in upset sale, and we sold 25 of those, which is about 38%.
So can you repeat those numbers, please?
For...
The ones that you did, the two that you just said.
So the...
You, you had...
Yeah, 2,924 returned and 2,858 were paid.
Yeah, and then...
So the 98% collection rate and 2% went to the tax sale.
Yeah, the two after that.
25 of 66.
Could you start at the beginning? Okay, 66.
56 went to the sale, we sold 25.
We sold 25.
So give me an idea of the past...
Is that, is that pretty high?
Give me an idea of the past. The upset sale, let's see, was the lowest by almost 100 in the last five years. And is the, pretty much the highest number of properties sold in upset in the last four years. Just give me an idea, in 2016, you had eight, nine properties in the upset sale. We sold six. In 2015, at 77, we sold 11. We sold 25 out of 66 this year. I really didn't think we'd sell that many, which I didn't think the sale would last as long as it did. So I really didn't expect to be there until seven o'clock at night, but I was hoping to be out there a little earlier than that, but we were not. Which is good though, because then only 41 properties will go judicial next year, as opposed to the 67 that we did this year. So 67 that we presented judicial sale, we sold 40. So that leaves 27 to go to the repository list. Now, if you guys don't know what the upset judicial repository, you can meet me afterwards. I'm not going to go into the whole spiel of it, but the differences are, but do we have 27 to go to repository December 1st? Last year, I had it go in January 1st, just because I wanted more time to focus on finishing the sale and stuff. But I feel confident enough, I can move that up a month. And we'll see how it works out this year. I don't think a lot of people are going to buy new bids, right up the sale ends, and maybe they do, and it'd be right there. So December 1st is when people can start submitting bids for those properties. Proposing a property to a tax sale, the lowest in five years by almost 100. I think the reason being is we get that LexisNexis to do the research for bare addresses, real estate notice a little better, to go ahead and come and pay. Of course, the biggest judicial sale in these five years by almost double properties. I think it's because the judge pulled a lot of properties last year due to service, but hopefully we don't have that many again anytime soon. Overall, dollar wise, we had almost half a million dollars collected this year. It was pretty much 50/50 the upset judicial.
Is that moving around?
No, I have to go back and do some figures and see.
It sounds high.
But yeah, it's probably a little under that. Yeah, it's pretty high.
Very good. Anything else that?
What's that?
Anything else? Attorney Shree, did you have anything to add?
I was just wondering, next year, do you want, do you want to split the sale?
I would definitely like to split the sale. But I had the judicial sale in June, hopefully, to be to have them separated instead of being there for seven hours, six hours.
What's the estimate of the total, what is the total repository list above this option?
Hmm, gather that, put these on, 60 to 70, I would take a little seat.
I think there's two benefits to having the sale split and holding the sale in June, of course, would eliminate you from having two sales in one day and keep you from being there until September at night. But the other benefit would be, we can collect property taxes sooner. We could collect it in June, and this way the sale's late, so now we're going to be behind the ball on those taxes.
Not sure that it's on you. Kind of what you want.
I think it would help a developer too, or anybody that, you know, somebody that was looking at.
More time to work on the property, you can project them and rest of them, yeah. Definitely.
Good. Any questions from the commissioners?
This seems like a pretty dramatic swing to me. I mean, what do you attribute all of that to? The, I mean, what did you do differently this year?
The trash was in what?
Well, I mean, the number of properties sold is almost double or triple than previous years.
Yeah, that I can pinpoint the upset sales.
And then the number...
I would think maybe it has maybe putting a list on the website maybe, and more time of research.
Yeah.
People that bought them, so they'd be able to research, maybe go do what they had to do and figure it out, okay, there's this lean, this judgment, if I can sway that, I bought it.
And, and you collected a greater amount of, of properties, like taxes, got them up to date, correct? I mean, is that part of the LexisNexis bit that you're able to...
Yeah, that's the 98% that you...
Yeah, that you're, that's...
98% collection rate, yeah.
So you're, like, your ability to go after and remind people and identify...
Yeah, we started our mailings a little bit earlier to our research. We got those bare addresses and sent out additional notices to, hey, come in. I think that's helped.
Good.
LexisNexis is nice. It's a lot better than the reason before, just Spokio, and Spokio's like a glorified white page that you tell people is, it wasn't that great. They're very reliable.
Okay. Go ahead, we're done.
The 98%, so are those people just, what do they have to do to be current? Do they have to catch up all the years or just one year to keep them?
Just a year.
Okay. So they're still, they're still not current on the taxes, but they're not far enough behind the three years or whatever it takes to, okay. Okay, so they didn't completely get it? Is it, is it, okay. I just, I figured that was it, but I just wanted to be sure. And then on that, we've almost half a million that you collected, that gets dispersed out between townships and anybody else that that leans against us, right?
So the upset sale, the 209,000 that we collected, that will go for all the taxes and then any municipal claims that were submitted to me.
Okay.
Judicial sale is 244,000. That's going to go to part of the taxes and then there's some properties with overbids will pay all the taxes off and then there's some chunks left over to municipalities or claims and adjustments.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Gilbert?
Judy raises an interesting question. Were there properties where someone came in and paid both years, they're behind?
There's a few, but typically it's enter an agreement or just pay them one year.
Phil, the amount that's collected over a lot of names and taxes, isn't that returned to the property manager, the original?
Yes.
It's rare that we have that half included, yes.
So it's like this year, you might go?
Yeah, we had one or two.
Very good. Okay. Thanks very much, both of you, for presenting today. Let's move on to our projects. We have kept the list of projects that we came up with a few weeks ago. They should be all there if anyone has, if any of the commissioners has one that they want to put on there. I think the way it would probably work best would be, you can raise it now, update a couple minutes if you want, and we'll put it on there. But if you want to do like a five-minute presentation or something, let's hold that off until next week. But at this time, I'd open up to any of these that you want to update us on, any of the active projects.
Well, I mean, I have a project, I mean, that we didn't put up on the initial chart or whatever that I was going to update on. It can wait until next week. I mean, I don't...
Well, what is it?
Just us working with the Career Center.
Oh, okay.
So if you're comfortable with that, it shouldn't take more than five minutes.
Okay.
So I would have more projects than everyone's having on. So for lack of a better name, I call it the 3C Partnership Program. And basically, the idea is, is we've been meeting with the Career Center at the school district to kind of work on a partnership between the county and the school district. So at the end of last school year, in this spring, I started a conversation with Jim Evers, the director of the Career Center, and some of the staff about producing benches for the bike hike trail. Now, that was a project that we wanted to get completed by the end of this year and it didn't, the timeframe was too short for them to work on it. And so, so that project ended up getting shuffled over to another organization. But I kept having conversations with them about setting up a program with the county. So they have a couple of different programs that we can use of, at the very least initially. The two main ones, or the three main ones are their marketing program, their construction program, and then their computer aided drafting program, or architecture program. I don't know what the name of that is. Technically, everybody uses a different one, but they use computer aided design in order to, in order to do architectural drawings. And they do all of the project planning and then the construction team puts it together. Currently, the Career Center works pretty extensively with the Habitat for Humanity. And so through that program, they've built, I don't know, six or eight houses over the past 10 or 12 years. And that takes up an enormous amount of time with the construction program. But they have a lot of time through the winter to work on stuff. And essentially, the whole goal here is to basically have a list of projects that do not have a timeframe to get done, like they're not time sensitive, that they can work on as, and work into their curriculum and work into their programs. So with the idea that we would be using, like, for instance, with the construction program, using Act 13 funds in order to do beautification projects. And this is in the construction bucket, so I'll start there. So basically, what's being set up now are template agreements that we would have between the county and the Career Center, or county and the school district. This is also a program that I'd like to open up to the municipalities and try to promote with them. Just to start with the funding element of it, Act 13 funds come from unconventional drilling. And basically, the money goes to the state and then comes back to us. Now, Warren County is not a hotbed of, of natural gas drilling activity or unconventional drilling activity. So as a result, the funds, they're not small, but they're not enough to do any major construction projects. As an example, like in Tioga County where they have a massive Marcellus jail program, I mean, they've built entire health centers with the funds that they've gotten from Marcellus jail. In our case, you know, our funds, especially like the beautification funds are, you know, hover around $100,000, $150,000. And we're always looking for opportunities to use them, you know, judiciously, but they're not enough to construct a, have a major construction. They are enough to use, you know, a few thousand dollars depending upon what the project is a year in order to work with the school district so that they can do a construction project. So examples of the types of construction projects are in this white paper. For instance, around the courthouse would be the installation of benches, doing new picnic tables, you know, potential for a gazebo or pavilion, you know, any type of small construction project around the courthouse. These would be managed by our maintenance director and also our planning and zoning director. And they, they basically coordinate with the Career Center. The Career Center would work through the winter, design the projects. Once everybody was comfortable with it, then they would go, the funds would be allocated to buy the materials and then they would do the construction probably through the winter and do an installation in the spring. The same thing would be done around the county to various municipalities. So if a municipality is interested in this program, there'll be an application process that they'll fill out, you know, what type of project they'd want to do. So for instance, a municipality wants a pavilion installed in one of their parks, they would apply with us. We would review the application. If everybody was comfortable in the project, we would greenlight it and then have the, we would put together an agreement and then the, the school district would start construction of the project, or design and then construction of the project. The second part of this is the marketing track, which is basically their, they have a marketing and design program. And so we would utilize this, we'd work in coordination with this program in order to produce print materials and social media materials for the county. So previously, Commissioner Gafflin, you had a, you had an intern work with you, work with your company through this, right? And they, so, and they work with a lot of different businesses around town to do, to do various design projects. A couple of examples would be, and I list them in here, would be, say, brochures. Like, for instance, all the directors have information related to their individual departments. We could work with them to have a brochure rack put together and have them design all the brochures and they could take all year if they wanted to, to put a couple of them together, you know? So we do a little bit of time. The social media and website development would be us basically coordinating with them in order to do design projects related to like social media. So have them put together graphics for promotion throughout the year for like all of our events. So the Johnny Appleseed Festival, we'd have them put together a bunch of ad, like ads or graphics that we would then share on our Facebook profile and, and stuff along those lines. And, and so I'm, basically, I'm proposing this as an option to the county and looking for the support of the other commissioners and the community in general.
In general, it sounds like a great idea. Specifically, did you need this passed through?
No. Basically, what's going to happen now is I've already initiated a conversation with the solicitor in order to put together a template agreement. So I'll work with, I'll continue to work with the Career Center and with Planning and Zoning and the Maintenance Department. And then when we have a project, we will bring that agreement to the commissioners' meeting. And then that will be where everybody can approve or disapprove of it, like a...
Is there any chance of just creating a sort of generic contract or a memorandum of understanding, attorney sheet, that we could put these projects under so we just kind of pass it once and then, or even annually? But it seems like we're going to go through and do a template every single time.
Well, the, the only thing is, is that each project's going to, I'm sorry, I've got to go off.
Go ahead.
Each project's going to be unique, so if, depending upon the nature of the project, the liability could be diced up a little bit different, especially if we bring municipalities into it. That's my understanding of it. And plus, the school district's going to want to pass it every time. At least that's what they do with Habitat.
Very well.
Perk me if I'm wrong.
This is January, November 5th.
Okay, thank you. That's it. That's my question.
All right. Any other projects you want to say to us?
It's a marketing street side.
I have a question.
Yeah, it's your...
Your marketing task force for the county, are you considering using the Career Center marketing program?
Absolutely, they could. I mean, I think this ties into a couple of things. So the marketing task force could be one of them. Another one could be the Rural Regional College. Just because they, their programs kind of are going to, or Career Center a little bit more too. So I think that all three entities could work together.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, or questions? Others?
I just had a quick question. I work for Habitat, so I know that Career Center does support us with construction of the houses and everything. Is there some concern in the timeframe and any issues that we...
Yeah, so all, all the projects are to be filler for them.
Okay.
If they can't work on a Habitat project, but...
I'm pretty easy.
Yeah. I mean, I asked, I had meetings with the directors up there, both of the, the design program and the construction program, and they were both excited at the idea of doing this and that they'll, they'll figure it out. As an example, there are about to be construction on the Career Center, which is going to end up moving the design program and they're not going to be able to work on a lot of the projects that they would. So they're, they're actually, if we can get a project to them, they'll be working on ours while they're moved.
Are you going to see a problem or...
Yeah, no, I, I, obviously, like, the Habitat for Humanity comes first in line, in my opinion. This is to give them a queue of projects that they can work on. And again, the goal, the nice thing about the county and this setup is, is that there's no timeframe. So they don't, it's not like a, a bridge is going to be out or a road's going to be closed or, you know, some facility's going to be down. This is something that they can develop and then install and it'll add to the aesthetics of the communities.
Okay. Thank you. Todd, did you have something?
Marketing streets, I was supposed to be marketing. Or is it marketing?
No. So they take marketing a lot? I'm the empty.
So the sidewalks should be done, from my understanding, within the next two to three weeks.
Yeah. Hallelujah.
Yeah. And then...
Do we have someone to add on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Do I have a friend too?
Matt, Matt's lined it up with them. I don't know.
The same price, from what I understand, it's just a different contractor. I believe it was one of the contractors that bid, actually. So from what I understand, we had bid out, let's say, 14 pounds of concrete or something like that. And for that, if I recall correctly, one of the other bidders bid way higher than the one that we originally awarded it to. And now the one that we originally awarded it to is not willing to do it for that price. And so...
And so we're giving it to the other one, but limiting it to the only four paths that absolutely have to be done by winter for the same price. So it's just accepting the next bid, from what I understand, except a limited scope.
Wait, say, who is it?
I don't remember this.
You don't? Okay. You have insurance for it, because I don't.
You'll have to get with Matt, I don't know what he's got from him.
You know, that may be something we should add to that process flow if they're doing something physical, need to go C O Y.
C O Y and W nine if they have to work for it.
Yeah, if you could add that, or reminding me to add that, this is what I think I have a problem. Then the J L H back, they're going to be doing that by winter?
Yep.
Okay. And the boiler is of course going to be done by winter. So that's most of our urgent things. The tan, where are we at on the tan?
Yeah, we have till November to get them, get the bids in.
Okay, but it's out. We're getting it, okay, perfect.
I've had two banks contacting me back so far asking for information. One of the holdups that they're all waiting for is they would like our audit financial statements. Talk to the auditors to see when we can get, they'll send a preliminary draft of it so they have something to go by, which I was told we would maybe have by last week and then they kind of missed that, they had to throw in some last minute changes. So I'm hoping I might get a preliminary draft this week that I can at least get to the, to the two banks that so far have expressed an interest.
Okay. Anything we can do to help write that along? The audit, yeah. Really, I see that I've got it on the urgent list, but move that over to the urgent and important, that's starting to hold us up. All right, any other update? Oh, the nine-one-one tower agreements. Can we close that down?
Yeah, I can get those to you.
Okay, you got it? Good. So we talked about this like a year ago on a work session, probably, but we've got a situation where one of the agreements that we have for a nine-one-one tower that is on a piece of private property is out of date, we need to update the contract or contracts.
And contracts because it's unique.
Right.
The building is literally sitting on two different, the building is, the building is a shed and it is literally sitting on two different pieces of property, two different owners.
I still don't understand how that happens.
That's set on, corner to corner too, it's not like it's a little bit of it, I mean, it's like diagonal on this property line.
All right, so what we're going to do is now that you've gotten the contracts drafted to the return sheet, Todd and I will go meet with the property owners and hopefully get their agreement and then we'll bring it to the next public works, excuse me, the next public meeting and pass them. Correct? And tentatively, we're offering a minor amount of money of rent. Okay. Very good. That looks like all the urgent, oh, right to know.
Right to know, I actually drafted a whole policy, I mean, right to know.
Sorry, you have to do a whole?
A whole, a whole policy. There's an issue to be addressed regarding the scope this pertains to our other elected officials outside of the commissioners' direct purview. Right to know is proven to be a tool, obviously very, very beneficial to the public. And you, you see a sophistication with the media people making regular requests where they seem to have very good understanding. General public, we're not going to get into any one request, but we've had some requests that are clearly outside of the law. Didn't have to go and deal with subsequent appeal and subsequent real one scheduled this month for upstairs of judicial review of that. So trying to go and make a little more transparency in our, in our, in our policy, we're directly delineating things under the law that aren't, I mean, I'm not going to go and describe any line of specific request, but I mean, we've had them for employee records that are well beyond the scope of right to know. We've had them for records pertaining to coroner or law enforcement that are beyond, either we don't even have some of them or are well beyond the scope. I think a lot of people tend to flip our grievance procedure for different things with our right to know and their two distinct, separate processes, not to be intermixed inappropriately. So trying to go and really break that down, make that a little transparent to the public to understand what they can get and to clarify that tool. So we don't, and that benefits us on our end, so we don't end up having to go and deal with a lot of open records appealed or for this or subsequent to that even litigation if we don't get a favorable justification by the open records office out there, there are those triggers. So I'm hoping to see, once we put that up, that we get a cut down, that kind of thing.
Okay. And so you'll have that rest to review at the next court session?
Yeah, actually I have a little officer, I've seen work with our right to know officer, she brought a very great point to me regarding scope, and I have done some research on that and I'd like to go and break down exactly for each other elected official, say, our district attorney, you know, how we're handling specific pipeline those requests. Because ultimately, when it comes down to a challenge of a litigation base, it's going to get kicked back to our right to know officer and us to be kind of want to avoid a lot of those problems before they even start unnecessarily.
Okay. So you'll, yeah, you can get that on the schedule for either the next meeting or following, whenever, return sheet does due diligence in order to actually present. What I'd like you to do is present five, 10 minutes on exactly, you know, any of the changes and what it really is so that we can, first of all, get hopefully some press on there and get some information ready for the public to understand what right to know is more full.
Although, once we address the actual scope procedure, which goes right into the preamble, they can have a copy of it. I mean, we have that. The plan had been to post a copy publicly and to make it available here at the courthouse for anyone who wants it.
To go along with that, I'd like to do a, I'd like to coordinate with the solicitor in order to present a proposal to the commissioners. And I did this a couple of weeks ago, or around two or three, four weeks ago, I can't remember, about utilizing a service like Archive Social in order to do archiving and right to know for all our social media properties, including the properties utilized by the sheriff, the district attorney and others. Just because in order to have comprehensive right to know policy, you have to incorporate that into what we're doing.
Right. Okay, well, then you can tag team on your presentation then.
That is really the cutting edge, right to know, is this is relatively, something new, newly litigated issue is what is, what is record under social media in our websites and our accounting on Facebook or accounting on Twitter? I mean, you look at the federal government right now, they're having lots of record out of the Twitter account. I mean, it's a, it's a real thing.
Okay, great, look forward to that. Any other projects that the commissioners want to update the public on? Any staff want to update on any active projects? All right, very good. I don't think we really have anything to review for the next public meeting, so skip that. Department, any updates, anyone from the commissioners want to update any projects going on within committees? Any directors? Very good. Commissioners, schedule anything to update us on, you got the Ruth, then Smith, then you go on then.
Yeah, Saturday, two things. One is obviously the recycling event, which is taking place at the Russell's, the former Russell Elementary School, now the Warren County School District Administrative Building, that's from nine to one. You need to go on the website, I can't remember, it's, I can't remember the link's name or whatever, but if you go to our site, the recycling event's right at the top of the page. That'll take you to where you need to go to register. I've got to remember to register for it. I'm going to be there working, but I have stuff I want to drop off. I've got fifty buckets of old paint in the basement I got to get rid of. So there's that. The second thing is, is Saturday at one o'clock at the Ruth and Smith Center in Sheffield, they're having their ninety-fifth anniversary celebration. And the Ruth and Smith Center is a really wonderful organization, it's done a lot of good work down in Sheffield, so I'll be there supporting that. The only thing I wanted to let you know, I have to double check the timing, but I'm going to be gone Thursday and Friday as a part of a C Y S training thing that I got signed up for. Basically, they need one commissioner to go and somehow we all agreed at some point, or, I don't know, it was like, basically, you know, it was like there was an email string and I didn't realize it was going to be like a two-day, all-day training. So I have to, or, actually, I don't even, it's not necessarily a training, it's, it's some kind of review process of the children and youth system in the county. And I, I still have to, I have to dig through information on it, so I'm prepared to go, but I don't think that I'll be available Thursday, Friday.
Okay. What about the Roush Board meeting?
The what?
Roush Board meeting.
I don't know if I'll be able to be there.
Okay. I've got the Northwest Commission Annual Strategic Plan Meeting, I've been here this year, so I'll be gone all day Friday for that. Otherwise, I should generally be around.
So you're not going to be here Friday?
I don't think so.
So I need to call, send out a cancellation?
Well, I, I'd wait, why don't I wait until ten or fifteen minutes after this meeting so that I can just make sure what the exact schedule is so that I can, so I know for sure that I can make it or not.
Okay, anything else schedule-wise? General discussion, does anyone have anything they want to raise? Very good. Well, then we can go ahead and adjourn if there's nothing else.